I'd like to call to order the Douglas zoning Board of Appeals meeting on Wednesday, July 10th at 7:00 PM. We're going to make a minor change to the agenda because we're just going to jump ahead to discussion number two, two potential board members. One of those potential board members has another meeting to attend, so Margaret, if you want to join us? So in our packets, Margaret has an application to become a ZBA member, so I'll have anybody to review it, but so, you'd like to join the board?
Yes, and I appreciate you taking me a little early here. I do have a big public hearing up in Upton that I have to get to. Well, yes, this phase of my career, I'm kind of winding down with the business, so I have an opportunity maybe to give back to the town, though I still have, you know, some work still going on in the town that slowly is winding down. So obviously, if any of those jobs come before the board, I'd have to recuse myself. And I also work for an environmental company part-time that also does work for the town, so I just have to be mindful of potential conflicts of interest and recuse myself. But I think, you know, with my experience of doing work in Douglas, I'm pretty familiar with a lot of the construction that's been going on for the past 20 or 30 years, so I'm familiar with, you know, the construction aspect of it, the regulations, the zoning, since I've been so involved. But as mentioned, I'm appointing my career that I'd, an opportunity on this board to possibly give a little back to the town, but my only concerns are, as I mentioned, the potential conflicts that I want to-
Do you have many projects or any projects that would be coming up that would be zoning-related?
I don't.
So when you say conflicts, is that because of the conservation jobs that you do?
No, there's a couple of jobs. At my short stint with Allen Engineering, there's a, I think there's going to be one or maybe it's already been before the board.
So they're prior, prior jobs from this point?
Correct, yeah. I won't take any of those now, but yeah, I still, you know, having done business for 20 years, you still have a lot of jobs still out there, and some of them just sit around for a while and all of a sudden become active, you know?
Yeah, because the, the reason why I ask you that is the challenge that we run into is every case, variance or special permit requires four votes, so we're trying to get it so just to be more beneficial to the applicant to have more than four people here because one person has a different opinion, it kind of messes it up for the applicant, so if we have a board of five, at least it gives them a fair chance.
Sure, and I don't want to put the board in a situation, so that's why I'm kind of bringing this up, but then, you know, and also, I do a lot of public meetings at night throughout, and sometimes that could, you know, arise, but, you know, I try to work around that the best I can.
Okay. Does anybody have any other questions for Margaret? Okay, what we need to do is, we have two applications and we need to make a recommendation to the board of select. We appreciate your time and-
Okay.
It is a five-member board with two alternates. Currently, we have four members, so it's not like one spot for two people, so it's, just so you know that before you leave.
So what is it?
It's a five-member board with two alternates.
Right.
Currently, we have four members. Technically, Jim hasn't switched over to an, from an alternate yet, but we have four sitting members on the board right now, so we could be able to sit.
Which would be a good thing.
Which would be a real good thing, yeah, because then if there is a conflict, one of the alternates could step in, but they have to be attending each meeting to be able to speak, they can't, you only do that mullin' rule once, they could miss a meeting, so.
Right, but can you catch those meetings on Zoom?
Yes, once.
Only once?
Once per case.
Oh, per case, per case, okay.
Yep.
No, I would obviously prefer being at meetings in person.
Yeah, I'll just give you a benefit done, so you understood what the makeup of the board was, and as the chairman said, that we have two applicants to make a recommendation to the appointing authority, so, but there's technically three spots open, so.
So you're still going to be sure?
We'll be a lot closer off than we are now.
Unless you can find somebody from here to the parking lot.
No, no, okay.
But anyways, we don't want to hold you up, Margaret, I know you got a little ride.
Thanks for taking me out of order.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Unless you want to come up now, well, that's your job, Dan, sorry.
Hey, Les?
Thank you.
So we have Les's application as well, so I know I've read through what I have seen.
I read through too. Did you have the opportunity to call ethics?
Yep.
What did they tell you?
I actually reported back to Jen, there was no issues, no conflict.
Okay, because I called ethics and actually I had my speakerphone, so we got two different opinions, which we're not appointing here anyways, this is just a recommendation and it just goes forward. So the woman that called me back told me that Chapter 268A, Section 21A, if you, if a board or committee can't appoint another board or committee member to a board that they supervise, right, but, so Matt and I talked about that, town administrator, and because the select board appoints and unappoints, right, technically, and has a code of conduct, his opinion was that the, we supervise that, so play it safe, send it to the town council. So Rich weighed in on it, and because in 1990, September 14th, 1990, I believe, was the date, that the town made the zoning board special employees, so they're under the same category as the select board, and because we're under 10,000 people, we're at 10,024 people, we're a special employee, therefore, because we have our own bylaws under 40A, the select board does not supervise this board. But Richard's, oh, I can follow the email or you can get it from Matt or Lisa, Richard's opinion was that the select board shouldn't appoint or unappoint a member of the ZBA, that was his recommendation, so it's just something you want to look into. Not trying to be difficult, I'm just, I cover all the bases as you-
Yeah, I think when I, when I talk to ethics, you know, the lady called me back, very knowledgeable in the area and stuff like that, and, you know, it was also the timing of application, you know, in January timeframe for the submission, and she saw her, looked through her laws and, you know, her knowledge base, saw there was no issues and no conflict, because this is separate, you know what I mean? And then I also raised a question, because one of the things you and I talked about was, you know, if something is weighed in on one board and then it goes to another board that you sit on, you know, the question of casting two votes on the same thing, and she said that was not, not an issue whatsoever, which was educational.
Yeah, I didn't bring, I didn't bring that up, I think you brought that up about me.
No, because that used to be, that used to be, no, no, that used to be something that was-
During our infamous campaign era.
No, 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 that was-
That question come up, but I was concerned about it.
Yeah, that was something that came up, so. But yeah, so just back around, you know what I mean, I've presented in front of multiple communities, in front of the ZBA, served on the planning board in Webster for a number of years, as well as in Douglas for five years, I think it was in Webster for three and a half, four years, or maybe even longer, as the vice chair in the planning board, and then, you know, I presented, same similar to Margaret, you know, presented in front of conservation boards and ZBA boards, so know the zoning background, know some of the things and the challenges that, you know, the board comes before reviewing applications, and, you know, I've, at least, I've had the opportunity to present in multiple communities, you know, those cases, those appeals, being on the other side of the table, so looking for the things that are, that are needed there to make the decision easier for board members, you know, on those cases, so. But I think, you know, you both have two strong applicants and stuff like that, which is good and-
Oh, right, yeah, I don't disagree with that, so I have the same concern that I asked Margaret, right? But I'm familiar with, with what Margaret's specialty is conservation, she's a wetland scientist or specialist or whatever you call it, so she's geared more towards the conservation end. My only concern with your particular application is you're involved in a lot of projects around town. Now, you can say I am, but I have only done two projects in town and I have no interest in working in town, so, and I don't think I've recused myself on any projects on this board.
Maybe one.
Maybe one, yeah, since 2013, so it's important that the membership is strong enough that they can be here all the time. It wouldn't be as concerning if you were coming in as an alternate because there was already six people on the board, but when you only have four or five, it gets concerned, that's all. You know, I'm doing, I'm just telling you what's on my mind so you understand, that's all.
No, I think I-
We don't appoint.
Yeah, no, I think, I think anytime you come across situations, you know, such as, you know, a neighbor asking for things, you know, you have to recuse yourself because you're within 300 feet, you know, or any budding, even any project, so I think that's always those situations that you got to recuse yourself in, in that standpoint, but, you know, then the members can go forward with voting, so, but I don't, you know, I don't think I'm in-
Yeah, actually, that was the case, my direct neighbor with the trucking thing.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, so, but-
But for the record, I didn't have to recuse myself because I have an interest as, and I am a resident, so I have a right to be in the audience, I didn't have to leave the room, I left the room on that one.
Yeah, yeah.
So I could have walked from this table, went and sat and read chair and participated if I wanted, but anyway.
Yeah, I think we're just focused on my application and not the other details and from down to the right. So, yeah, at the end of the day, you know, again, I've had the pleasure of, you know, going in front of like Webster and Dudley before your, actually after your time, Dan, but as well as other communities and stuff like that, so, again, and I've been involved in a lot of the zoning, even wrote zoning changes and reviewed zoning changes while being on planning boards and stuff like that, so I know how those, those changes affect ZBA boards because of the appeal process and stuff like that, so. And you kind of look for the, the things that are always, the nuisances or the common things that should be changed in your zoning, so you can always advance it, so it's not always, you know, coming constantly before our boards and stuff like that, so, and go forward from there, that's it. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions for Les?
No, I live right around the corner, so it takes me like three minutes.
Okay. Or do you run?
Huh?
Do you jog?
No, not in this weather, not in this weather. I don't think anybody's going to jog in this weather, it's pretty brutal, so I appreciate your time.
Yeah, you know, obviously, it's not our decision anyway, but we, we are-
Thanks for your patience through the process, it gets a little frustrating, but we're trying to get both, trying to get you both at the same time, so.
No, it helps, helps to have a full board too, right, that you guys have a disadvantage, you know, not having a full board or, you know, alternate, so appreciate your time.
Great, thank you.
Have a good night.
The agenda item, going back to the agenda, it was to reorganize the board, so it's done on an annual basis.
I'd make a motion to nominate Dan as chairman.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion to keep the chairman the same, the board, oh, sorry, you seconded it?
I seconded it.
Okay, made by Mr. Fitzpatrick, seconded by Mr. Palmer, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and we need a vice chair as well. Any recommendations?
Anybody else want to do it?
Oh, I ain't got time for that.
No, recommend him. Recommend him.
Yeah, I'll recommend.
What'd I do to you two?
I seconded it.
All right, we have a recommendation from Mr. Forget to appoint Mr. Fitzpatrick as the vice chair, that was seconded by Mr. Palmer, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Appreciate the support, guys.
I still want my ice cream.
Long wait.
Okay, now, the first agenda item is a public hearing for Megan Bonina, case number 2024-08, the address is 428 Northeast Main Street, the date of the application is June 17th. The following was posted in the town hall and also advertised in the Telegram Gazette, and that notice read as follows. The Town of Douglas zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing beginning at 7:00 PM on Wednesday, July 10th, in the Douglas Municipal Center Resource Room, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass., to hear the following application. 7:00 PM, Megan Bonina is requesting a variance pursuant to MGL Chapter 40A, Section 10 and Section 9.2 of the Douglas Bylaws for front yard setback relief under Dementia Regulations Appendix B to construct an above-ground pool in a VR Zone District. The property is located at 428 Northeast Main Street, MAP 141, parcel 66. Any person interested or wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated. A copy of the application is available for review during regular business hours in the Douglas Community Development Department, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. Okay, hearing the case tonight would be myself, Mr. Fitzpatrick, Mr. Palmer, and Mr. Forget. So we did get, in receipt of your application, and if you want to give us a rundown of what you've submitted.
I'm trying to put up a above-ground pool.
For us all to enjoy.
Which is 18 by 53 inches.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
18 feet round. My daughter's watching, I'm wicked nervous because she's watching me.
Yeah, no, don't worry about it, it's easy. Can I ask the building inspector a question?
Sure.
Shows it's five foot six from the step over to the pool, I know an end ground has to be 10 feet away, is there a limit, restriction, distance in which they have to stay away from the house but an above-ground pool?
I don't believe there's any distance to stay away, as long as there's no windows or doors that open up directly to the pool.
Yeah, I just don't want, I don't want to grant the door and then they run into another problem, that's all.
Is that a set of stairs there that you put it by?
I have a basement stairs.
The basement stairs?
Yeah.
Oh, the bulkhead?
Um, it's not a bulkhead, it's just a door with stairs that go down.
Well, that's 53 inches tall, it meets the guidelines, as long as they have a lock hole ladder getting into a pool, they don't have to have a fence around it.
There's a ladder, plus our bulk yard, it's on the road.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we didn't, yeah, go ahead, put it there, and then you go, oh, you're too close to the house, that's all, I was just trying to save you some, some trouble, that's not, that's all.
Are you on town search there or do you have a septic system?
Septic.
Septic, do you know where that's located on the plan?
In my front yard.
Right there, right there.
Like in front of my front door?
Yeah, I found that.
Oh, okay, all right.
That's a new one that was just installed, yeah, not that one.
Yeah, it's in there, a year, a year ago was installed. It's lightly shaded on the plan.
Yeah, yeah, I just saw it now, yeah, so that's no problem.
Those are my old eyes that didn't see it.
I didn't see either, it didn't even show up.
I idolized a block of people.
Again, it's like-
Do any members have any questions of the applicant?
No, I don't have any.
No, no, is anybody in the room that wants to make a comment on this case? Okay, hearing done.
So the, ask a question before we go to-
Yeah, go ahead.
Wait, she's real close to the chingling fence, it's just here, very specific dimensions here, 27.7 feet, 22.7 feet and 32.8 feet. You're going to have to get that, they're going to have to get that thing surveyed after, to make sure it's in that exact spot.
That would be at the pleasure of the board if they so deemed that they want to have a survey done.
Mr. Chairman, where, where it's a, an above-ground pool, in the event that this gets approved, I wouldn't be opposed to relieving of the requirement to get a, as built on the pool, because it's above ground, it's technically a temp-
But where she owns driveway, can't-
Well, you have, you have a fence there that's there now, right? So if you ended up three inches close to the fence, to the fence, and you, and we made you survey it, now you got to move it, I don't want you to do that, I want, you're so close to the fence, as long as you're within the fence, I'm happy with it, and that's what I'm suggesting to the chairman, that we don't make you get a survey, so, and that's why I confirmed with the building commissioner that he was happy with that as well. Other than that, I'm happy with that.
All right, anybody else?
As long as the board is in agreeance that they don't want to get a resurvey, I'd be happy with that.
As long as it's not outside, as long as it's not outside the fence, I'm happy with it.
Yeah, it's pretty self-explanatory as to the, the numbers as to where it's going to be, and I would make the assumption that you're going to stick pretty close to the top rate even there.
Even though it's considered a frontage, I'm considering a side of rail lot because her frontage is actually, her address is on Northwest, Northeast Main Street, that, so I guess I should say that for the record, so that anybody watching understands what my logic is behind it, because if we treated that as a side of a rail lot, it'd only be 25 feet, and she's at 32, so.
Unfortunately, she's on that, that point, so she has frontage on two roads, it kind of restricts things, but.
Right. Okay, we don't have any other comments, now let's entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Uh, someone.
Okay.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick to close the public hearing, seconded by Mr. Palmer, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, public hearing is closed. The board like to vote on this application, right?
Yes.
Okay, entertain any, any motion?
Make a motion to approve, don't get nervous, I'm just going to tell you how it works. A motion's always made in a positive manner, you would never make a motion to deny something, you always make a motion to approve it, and then the vote goes through, and then you'll figure it out as it goes, so I'm just explaining how it works, that's all. So make a motion to approve case number 2024-08, 428 Northeast Main Street, for a, for the above-ground pool. Where is my little thing? No, I think that's it. I think that's what I want to say then.
Okay, and we're just, we make a mention that we've got a plot plan showing the proposed location.
Yeah, and for the plan dated May 6th, 2024, by Turning Point Engineering out of Sutton, Mass.
Okay. Yeah, it's dated the 6th and signed 29th, but in any event, it's a, a plan from Turning Point Engineering.
Mr. Chair, could I just make one comment to that, you might want to, just for the record, that it's 18 feet and diameter 53 inches tall.
This ain't one of those endless swimming pools.
No.
Four and 18 foot, I'll amend my motion to include the dimensions of the pool is 18 feet in diameter, 53 inches deep, above-ground pool.
All right, okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick, we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Forget, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, your variance is granted, we will get it drafted, and it has to be submitted to the town clerk before you can, there's a grace period, I believe 20 days.
So next summer, there'll be a hole, or does it have to go up within a certain amount of time period from today?
No, it's, the town council drafts our decisions, so we send it out to them, and as soon as we get it back, we submit it to the town clerk, so realistically, it could be, it could be 40 to 60 days, but we'll do it as quickly as we can and-
We try to encourage them to move along.
Yeah, this one's a pretty simple.
But then when it comes back, there's actually a 20-day appeal period, if you were to do something before that appeal period, you work at, you're doing it under your own risk to do it, so, you know what your neighbors are like, so I don't intend to make you having a problem, but just trying to help you understand the process.
So, so once it's up, I call somebody from the town hall and then you guys come and inspect it?
You'll have to go.
We'll get a permit through the building department to put the pool up, and then we'll
do the, I'll give you the whole rundown of the inspection process that's required.
All we said is you could put it within the setbacks, so then it's up to him to run through the building portion of it. All right, you want to wait for your daughter on the way up?
I'm glad she found the channel.
Well, I don't think it's live anyway, so.
Oh, it's on Zoom.
On Zoom, she'll see you on Zoom.
So this is done?
Yep, yep.
Our portion of it's done, and we just have to get the, get the approval, get the decision back, then we sign it, goes to the town clerk, gets a stamp, then, they have to record it too, don't they?
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Welcome.
Good night. Good luck.
Have a good night. We have some minutes in our packet, plus we have a report from-
The next item is a discussion about 58 Cottage Colony, it was case number 2023-15, feel like to join us, sir? So this property was granted a variance a while back, they enlarged it.
We want to do the house over last year.
Yeah.
We came in the fall, yeah, well, it's, it's done, I was just going to give the pass rule, that's the value of the house, this is where we want to put a front step on the house, you know, the lady's 79, and she's going in, that's how it's every day, grabbing on to the thing and stepping up a step, so we want to put a platform on it, the local district said you can't put a platform on it, it's too close to the road, and the house next to her is closer, it's going to move.
Yeah, maybe.
The house on the other side touches the road, the whole house does, because one, it's two hours to that, she sold this house since 1938, $50.
Well, good for them.
I know, and she spent, you know, almost $300 to do a house over again, and she just wants to have a step that she, and she wants a roof over it so the ice and stone doesn't want it, because she's lived there all her life, so she passes and then it gets rid of it. She sold the house, it was used for-
Yeah, that's what, that's what changes it, yeah, we got, we went through that with North Brown, with that side entrance.
Yeah.
If you want, I mean, he actually, I have a thing to, you know, that's the door, I want a platform, one step down, and that's all.
All right.
And the reason too, I was telling them that we were going to dig two piers, that this corner, the corner of the septic tank, the corner of the septic tank, it's a tight tank, is right where you dig the pier, so we were going to try to get it a little wider, so we had to dig it past that about a foot, so bigger than 36 inches, because we wouldn't be able to get a pier in it, unless you want to go with, he suggested, in three fast steps, but if you do that, you're going to be setting a step on the corner of the tank, which is to me is the same thing as putting a post from the tank, you know, huh?
Yeah.
But it also has one of those heavy-duty tanks you can drive a truck on, you know, let's get those.
H20?
Yeah, that's the, that's the top line, so we need, we need to get her in there, because it's done, we do have to get a permit to get some steps on it, and, you know, so, yeah.
For the, the board members, I had a similar situation just a few years back, and, and the state building inspector told me that if you put a wooden, wooden platform and a couple steps, and it's in any way screwed, nailed, or whatever, to the building, then it becomes part of the structure, and in this case, it wouldn't be within the guidelines of the variance that was granted. If it was precast, that, the precasts usually sit on, on some angle line, but there's no attachment to that, bolted.
Yeah, they're not bolted, it's just hanging on at these angles.
And the front of it would be on the tank, you know, with the-
The front edge of it, yeah.
But you could take them off, I suppose, if you have to have it doing the tank, I mean, that's a possibility, that tank should last for 50 years.
With the precast, you don't, you don't have footings in the ground for a precast.
You're going to put blocks on it, right?
It's just blocks, so it's a whole different- So it's a whole different concept than putting a footing on a corner of a septic tank that's not supposed to be-
But you only need a, you only need a platform.
We only need, she only got one step down, a platform.
Yeah, it's a, it's a platform and then you're on the ground.
Yes.
Or you're going to have another step in front of it.
One step.
Okay.
But that's, one step actually goes right on the ground. It's just about the same thing. She puts a little loom there, it's going to be almost buried instead. So you step on that, then one step on top of the platform.
What's the elevation from the, from the door sill to the ground right now?
I can measure that, but it might be right on the ground. No, I don't know. I don't want to go much further. That's, that's-
Speaking of eight, it may be.
Yeah, that's, that's the platform. I would say it's no more than a foot. No more than a foot.
For the, for the door sill to the ground?
I got a picture right here, it's a picture. This was the house right next to hers. It has a huge step down. And actually, this was the, this is the house on the other side. This was Doug Nolan's house.
Five foot.
That's the road here. And the house sits two foot.
Yeah, but that's-
Yeah.
So.
They may have-
No, I know.
They have two big additions put on it.
I don't see anything.
They may have applied for something that included being that close and cutting it, so.
This is, this is the distance right here. So you got, you got, like, there's a cement block and there's two of those old thin blocks. So you have a platform.
A platform.
It's going to come down. You have one, you have one step to the ground.
That's all it's on.
One step. And that will-
Just grade it up, one platform, be done.
Yeah.
I'm just going to get her something so she can-
Make it simple.
Is there, is there any way you could, you could just bring the grade up and just put a platform there? Because that's all it looks like you need.
Well, it's going to be brought up to some degree because she's going to want to put lawn in the front there. She's got enough room to put lawn to the road. But we don't really know, uh, you've got a septic tank there.
Because it may make more sense to bring the grade up and put the plat- a single platform. I'm just, I'm not telling you how to build your, your house or nothing, but it may be easy. You just raise the grade a little bit right there. You, because the foundation is exposed way over here. So you got enough room to stay away your eight inches from your wood, right? Then you can put your platform and it's just from the dirt, one on the platform and you're in. Because your step, as you were talking, I know, listen to me for a minute. As you were talking, you're saying the bottom step because she's going to put loom, it could be almost buried. Well, then here, here comes Mr. Building Inspector that says you can't change it more than an eighth of an inch from step to step, or a quarter inch from bottom to top. So you can't have a two-inch step and a seven-inch step.
The other thing is if there's a platform here, you're going to need stone tubes.
Well, either that or-
And they'd end up being on top of the-
Another thought.
It was just a single platform.
Bring the grade up and you, you do patio pavers. If you're doing a landscape feature in the front of loom and everything else, if you do pavers, you're not interfering with the setbacks at all. So you bring your grade up to the front, to the door area, put your pavers in that front area for your landing to step out of the house. Now you're on pavers, you're not dealing with the issue of different step heights and everything else. And you're not dealing with attaching into the house and everything.
All, all I'm saying though is, you see what the grade is now? That's pretty much even with the grade on the road. If I go higher than that, that's going to be higher than the road. And when the water comes down there, it's just going to wash all that away. Because we have problems up there right now when the water comes. They just went up to the top of the hill on the main road and put a new berm there. Because it rained, the water poured down there into that guy's garage, came down, washed Hurry Out out, washed the other guys out. And Doug Inidum suggested to put a berm in front of the whole house and run it over to his house because he has a, a drain in his house. But, you know, technically, that's not right either because that drain runs into the water.
No, I mean, all the, all the road runoff eventually goes into the water anyway.
I know.
But, I mean, there is other options that I can see, but it's, it's up to the board.
I don't know if I could bring that grade up high enough, but I'll be-
I would think that if you brought, if you're going to do a landscape feature in the front, you can put a lawn out there. If you took it, did some type of a berm, because now you already talked and you got water problems. You do a berm, you do your landscape feature, you put your pavers down or something like that, there's no need-
Even if he did that out of wood, he's not going to attach it to the house anyway, though.
Well, I'd rather do one out of the cast, if you think the cast thing will work better. I mean, do that.
Yeah.
That'll be your quickest, easiest thing.
Yeah.
I mean, we do the cast, if, if we can, you know, use it. They have them pre-made on, they have it off, you know, and see how high they are. You get different colors.
Mm-hmm.
If, if, but I mean, if I can't do that, we need an alternative. So we should kind of give me a couple of-
A, a simple platform isn't going to weigh that much that you, you're going to have to have this big structure to hold it up underneath. It's not like five-sided stairs and a platform. That weighs a lot. That pla- you're going to be able to put four patio blocks down, set that thing on and walk away.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then it's simple.
Real simple.
Yeah, real simple. Yeah.
Because you, you're not going to attach a wooden set of stairs to that house unless you have nothing for a step going in because you've got a stone foundation, there's nothing to attach to. So, your simplest thing? Pre-cast platform?
Absolutely.
Four patio blocks, set it on, you walk away. It's not going to go anywhere, it's going to stay perfectly fine.
And if it is a little higher than it has to be, we'd have to have the platform in one step. But the step would practically be even with the ground.
And they do make those, yeah.
And then you can, then you can bump it up with some papers or something. You can walk, have a little walk to the side.
Platform made it.
Just can't be attached to the house.
Does she have to get any kind of-
Ironically enough, if you look at the code, on an exterior set of stairs, the bars there-
That wouldn't be, uh, the highway department.
Can be a small force.
That would, you have to talk to the highway department.
Okay, okay.
That wouldn't-
On exterior, not interior. Spill it up with a crush down. Put it there. You set it slow off to the side.
Yeah.
That makes-
It's all tight quarters up there.
If you have a problem with water, put the berm in the guy's, who's going to catch the bees. So you get the berm and you bring your grass up. You give them the pre-cast, a little patio. Pre-cast platform, it's so much cheaper than- It's so much cheaper than just trying to do a lot of wood. By the time you buy the material and the labor, you've bought about six of those platforms.
Yeah.
They're cheap.
Yeah, okay. And they, you know, they come up-
You go right to Oxford, they have them right there.
Yeah, they, yeah, they get one right now. There's places in Oxford doing it.
Yeah. They make them out of fiberglass also.
Oh, they do?
Those fake brick ones are fiberglass.
So I would say if we could do the, the cast, the pre-cast.
Absolutely.
Then you don't need anything at all from us. We can't vote on it tonight anyway. Because it's not under the vote, it's just under discussion.
Notify the abuddies and that's a lot of work for nothing. So if you could work with that or the pavers, or a combination of both.
Well, we could do the platform and I could make sure, I mean, we've got a little room for a grade to come up, a few inches one way or the other. That wouldn't matter. I can, I can bring it up a foot, you know, because it'll be higher than the road.
Right.
And I don't want to have that washing and everything with the other rains. So would you be suggesting that I try the, the, the pre-cast first?
I would say pre-cast or pavers.
I think that'd be the simplest thing to do it.
All right, so, um, when, and if, when, when can I stop it? Because she can't go in that house, we get some steps on it.
There's nothing holding them up.
We have nothing to do.
You're not holding them up.
You can go right ahead.
You can do it.
You can put a pre-cast set of stairs on it.
You don't need anything from us for a pre-cast set of stairs.
No, because they're not attached. So you can go do it tomorrow.
Yeah.
I can, all right, okay.
Well, tonight if you want.
No, but, yeah, you don't have to.
There's nothing you need from us or from Ken.
So I can do what I showed you in the picture. That would, that would work. The picture I showed you with the pre-cast set of steps. I mean, that's what we're going to do, but we're going to put the pre-cast here. Depending on the, the level, it would be one step if that.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
All right. Yep.
Can she, can she have the step on the side or the front? Which way should it go? Because they make them both ways.
You want to, you want to keep the encroachment as far away from the road as you possibly can.
So if she comes down the side, she can walk back to her cop, she fucks on that.
It's only one step and she comes up 36 inches. That gives you a legal platform. And then step on the ground, so.
All right, so.
Step on either of the three sides.
I'll try tomorrow to see if we can get a pre-cast ready to go.
Yep.
We'll get it when you come up there anyway, so we'll, we'll do that.
That'd be a simple plan.
So, so I'm going to do what you see here on this picture with a pre-cast.
All right. Good luck with that.
All right, I don't think, uh, we haven't had a problem with youngish here. That's where the, uh, the tank was in the front.
Yeah.
So, so, yeah, so if we do it here, we'll see the neighbors have hot tub, yeah. She wants to just put it outside her house too, so it'll be all together and she can walk there.
Yeah, and that, that's not a zoning issue, so.
Okay, that's not, that's highly involved, okay.
Yeah.
Actually, I told the office today, we said, see if we can move the pre-cast in. But you said that to me like you were in office today. So I said, he mentioned that. So he said, that would be good, just see if we're able to do it.
Yep.
Anything that's attached to the property becomes part of the property, becomes part of the structure.
Yeah, you know, what changes it is that roof. That's the biggest thing that changes it because the roof provides shelter, so now it becomes the structure.
So, so I'm okay to do that?
No, you're okay to do that, but we're talking, going back to the wood discussion. When, when you're attached to the house, it wood-wise, because of the roof over it, you really-
That's mine.
Jump right into the description of the structure.
Good luck with that.
Good. Thanks for coming in.
Yeah, that's what I'm going to answer, because I said, if they say okay to that, starting things, if I can get one tomorrow, so we'll do that. Thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
And we can, so if I get that all set with the sign-off on the plumbing and the thing, you can probably look at it, right? Because she probably wants to go in.
Call the office when you get-
Call the office, set up your appointment.
Thank you.
Yeah, let's, um, you got to make your recommendations.
Tell him to stop on the way home. Yeah, I'm going to just-
Do it on the way home for him.
And, Ken, I was wondering if you could just give us an update on North Brown? We haven't had one in a few months.
Yeah. So, North Brown, as you can see by the pictures, that were part of the report, they're moving right along. They have one more, I believe it's one more foundation hole is all they have left on Nautical Way. They've got one poured, one dug, and they've got one more to dig. I've had discussions with Neil Wright Bickie with regards to what they're proposing moving forward for Phase 4 and getting all that stuff together. And he said they're working on it. I says, well, you know, it's not going to be something that's, you know, one meeting and done. Probably you're going to have a, a lot of things that you're going to have to follow through with. So I don't know when your plan is to start excavating. But you can't even cut trees until you get approval for the next phase. With that said, I had a conversation with Doug Bush on the reports coming in. And he said to me, I feel like nothing is getting done on the reports. And he wanted to have a meeting with me to go over the reports and see where, where we can be for finishing up on that. Phase 1, Phase 2. And now potentially the left side of Nautical Way, because that is completely built at this point. So that would take and encompass that whole original development. There's no reason why that can't be finished.
Right.
The bottoms of the ponds, the retention basins, all of that finished. So I said, yeah, I'd be more than happy to have a meeting with you on that. And bring in either, uh, Tim or Neil or both or whomever. But I would also like to have one of the board members, if somebody's available and willing to do it, to sit in on it also.
Yeah, I could do that. Um, I just had a little bit, a couple of days' notice.
Yeah.
Could do that.
If something comes up, you can make it, I, just tell me, and I, I know enough of the history of it, I guess.
Because he said, he was just concerned that, you know, he keeps that in the same things. He goes, am I wasting my time going there? And I said, no, by no means are you wasting your time going there. I says, we have a running record of what's going on. I says, every time I go up there, I have conversations with the contractors up there and say, so what's the status, where you at? And if I find things when I'm up there that I'm not happy with, let's get this fixed.
Right.
Like, he's got one of his, uh, rain gardens that he's put rapid in it because he can't get it to drain down. I says, that's not staying there permanent, right? I says, that's not what's called in the plans. I says, anything that you want to alter from the plans, you have to go in front of the board-
Right.
-to get approval. You can't just randomly change it. And then I drop back into the center of Road A, as they call it, coming out with the rap in there. I says, that's not supposed to be there.
Right.
So unless the board approves to change, that's going to be paved and grassed and the catch basement as, as shown on the drawings.
I don't remember the exact verbiage, but I believe Phase 1, 2, and 3 had to be complete. And then they had to place a bond prior to Starting Phase 4.
I believe the bond was to complete Phase 1, 2, and 3 for the final paving, final sidewalks and all that. They had to be bonded if they weren't going to do the final prior to Phase 4.
Did you talk to Talman's office?
No, I haven't had a chance on it.
Yeah, I had asked him, uh, a few days ago if he could just reach out to him because we're getting close on getting to Phase 4. There's a lot of things getting triggered at that point.
Right.
Just to make sure that-
But I mean, you're even looking at an issue with, I mean, this project was started in 2007. And I'm pretty sure that, uh, I think the proposed bondage that they would need for that would be $350,000. That's not going to do much should they walk away from the project. Not that, I'm not saying they would, but. So I think that that would need to be readdressed and everything else, along with this Phase 4.
Right, and the, uh, our engineers should be able to give us a realistic-
I said to him, I said, chances are good that when they come up with the Phase 4 project, that you're going to be incorporated to do a cost factor bonding for Phase 1 through 3.
Right.
He says, that's not a problem. He says, that's not a problem.
Well, Ken, I, I'm not sure my memory's exactly 100% correct on this, but I thought those had to be completed prior to starting Phase Four. And then Phase Four had to be bonded. But that was, what, 2007?
I could, I could try and decipher some of that paperwork on that and see, but I will get ahold of Talman.
Talman might be able to help us out with that.
And see what they, see if he can, because he was, he was the one that was right in the middle of that whole thing.
That's correct. And it was Jay himself.
Yeah.
Well, just put it down as bonding requirements. Might if I ask him a couple of questions about these, this punch list. So looking at a, a punch list, the tracking list.
Yep.
Starting with the, the fourth one down.
Damage guard rail?
Damage guard rail. Ballo will repair once majority of project, uh, project is complete, so.
That's the guard rail that was bent up and distorted and I had him at least go in and get that razor edge off of it.
Yeah. But, so he should be looking at that pretty soon because he's, I would say that if you're three quarters of the way through it, you probably the majority of it.
I, I don't see any reason why that can't be finished now.
Right.
It's not gonna be affected by anything on the completion.
Because that's in the first, first pot, right? Phase One?
Right, that's right, it's the beginning of Road A.
So.
So I'll bring that up.
If we're going into Four, we, he should be trying to clean these out because if you go from that one, the stormwater cell number 40 is holding water, that's 2009. Is that still the same?
Stormwater cell. Uh, 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 which one is that though?
Number 40.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just trying to hit my mind, get a hold of.
So, so in fairness, so I, so I don't harass you tonight. If you could go, because if the engineer is concerned that he, none of, none of this stuff's getting addressed, what I did is I went up all the way to the end of 2021 issues.
Yep.
That's three to five years ago, uh, no, three to seven years ago on this list of things.
Right.
I would assume that they should be, uh, to get rid of those, especially if they're in Phase One and Two.
Well, this is, this is, this was the bulk of the meeting that we're gonna have going through this line item.
Yeah.
And that's why I want one of the board members to be there.
Right.
And they can express their concerns on which ones, you know, dates or whatever and where they are with the phasing on the project. And, you know, reaffirm what needs, what should be done, what needs to be done and, and a realistic timeline. Because like I said, now they've gone through Nautical Way, they've got one more hole to dig. They got a foundation in, a hole dug, one more hole to dig. My understanding is all but maybe two units are sold or on deposit up there.
Yeah.
We're substantially complete with that center road.
Correct.
And as I, I personally don't see any reason why we shouldn't be enforcing that everything on that left side from Nautical Way all the way to the tree line be completed.
Right. Some of these have been deficiencies for seven years.
Right. So, so my thought is, is look into these and get some answers ahead of your meeting. So for the insanity, he doesn't get there and, or you don't understand. And this is what, we've gone in those circles before in these meetings and it's frustrating. If these things are that old, there should be other than the pavement. I can see that something's gonna be, the cracking on the edge is gonna be done with the top, but I get that. But if we have ponds that are still holding water and we have broken guard rails and we have these different things, there's no reason why they can't get them fixed. So the majority of this, these basins were directly affected by the last phase of Nautical Way. Because we still had the sediments coming off the hill as they were doing their construction. So I did have a conversation with Neil Wright Bickie. I'm gonna say it was three weeks, two weeks ago, three weeks ago. With regards to the fact that even the big storm management basins on the far left side of the development that have been holding water now have cat and eye tails in them, the whole thing. I says, there's no reason why those cannot be completed. And every storm cell along Nautical Way, left side, and Compass Road all the way through, I want them completed. There's no reason not to have them completed at this point.
I agree.
I mean, I understand about the paving and the sidewalks and I don't even understand about the lighting. And there was tree schedules that needed to be planted. And there's planting schedules that need to be adhered to for these storm management basins. So that should all be done.
Number 12, fall protection along Road C specifically near basin number two. That's from 2021. Ballo will communicate with design engineer options on this item. So if we have a fall protection issue, they should be able to take care of that.
Yeah. I'll have to take, I, I've got the full set of the master set of drawings in my office. And I'll have to go through each one of these to go through and find out exactly what site we're talking about with storm catchment and everything, because I don't remember basin numbers going down through. I'll go through, I'll highlight them on, on the master set plans that I have with regards to this sheet. And I'll have that all at the same time of meeting.
Okay. All right, and our last item of the night is to review the minutes of the meeting on June 5th. That meeting lasted eight minutes.
Hmm, that was a long one. Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of June 5th, 2024, as written.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick. We have a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Palmer to approve the minutes of June 5th as written. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The minutes are approved as written. And that is, oh, well, we can get back to the, to potential board members that were here tonight. I don't know if anybody has any thoughts on them. I, I know there is a, there was some discussion about potential conflicts. And did we, did we ever get an opinion from town council?
Uh, town council's opinion was to the Board of Selectmen as far as his suggestion is that, that concerning taking a, appointing a current sitting selectman to the zoning board where they're both special, were all considered in special employees. He recommended that the Board of Selectmen do not appoint or remove in that situation. So that'll be up to the board. I think the, as far as, if you don't mind, I'll chime in with my two cents. As far as the two applicants, historically, Margaret is typically all environmental stuff and conservation. I think we've only seen her here once for a zoning issue. And that was up at Northwest Main Street, that house.
Yeah, I think she's been here more than that.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, yeah. I think she's been here four, five times.
Okay, yeah.
She's trying to, from my understanding, she's trying to get out of that portion of the engineering field and kind of focus on wetlands.
Right, my, yeah, well, yeah, she's working for the, a consultant for the town versus for applicants. She's no longer working for Ellen. And she's no longer working. Her only concern was his prior jobs that she worked on before departing. That firm may come before us, so she'd have to recuse herself on those particular things, which is understandable. I would, I would make a motion that we recommend her appointment to the Board. Send our recommendation to the Board of Selectmen for their, their appointment if they so choose to do it.
I second that. Ron, do you have any thoughts on that?
No, I, I'm fine with it.
Okay, I think she'd be a good fit, actually.
Yeah.
All right, we have a, a motion to recommend Margaret Bacon as, to fill our vacancy on the board. And we'll make that recommendation to the Board of Selectmen. All in favor of doing so?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
On the, on the second applicant, as I stated during it, my concern is, is he's involved in a lot of projects throughout the town. And I see it as gonna be a continuing conflict for, to be a member of this board. He's gonna recuse himself more than he's gonna attend, I would think, or be pretty close. He's been involved in a lot of different projects.
If it's, um.
For that reason, I would, well, we take a vote on it, somebody can make a motion, I'm not making a motion.
Well, the other thing is we still have other openings, so if it's determined that he could serve, we have openings as an alternate, alternate.
Well, yeah, no, that's why I stated what our, what our current membership is and what the openings are. So it's not up to us, us to appoint them, it's just our recommendation as a board. So everybody's open to their opinion of whatever it is, what it is, so.
Well, we did take a vote to recommend Margaret Bacon, so I think there's a need for a second vote.
Well, you, you gotta send, yeah, I would send back a recommendation to appoint or not appoint an applicant, even if, if you have multiple ones, because you have three openings. So you, you wouldn't be just appointing one. So they're looking, the board is looking for, and because I sit on it, so I know what they're looking for. They're looking for your, your input as to whether or not you're recommending or not recommending the applicant to the board. They've given us the courtesy as a board to weigh in on it because we're sitting with the people that come in. So if we want them, we want them.
Yeah, I still, I still think if we made a recommendation to appoint Margaret, I guess, I don't think we normally make a recommendation not to appoint somebody.
Well, yeah, make a recommendation, appoint, and then they'll go up to the board to decide.
Yeah.
Right?
Oh, you guys, you guys, yeah, you can do it whatever way you want. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
What you're gonna do is you're gonna, everything's always done in a positive manner anyways. And then you're gonna vote accordingly. So if somebody wants to make, make that motion, you make the motion, that's all.
I think we did.
No, we, we did it on Margaret. We didn't do it on Mr. Stevens.
All right, so I'll make a motion to, what are we looking to do?
It's a positive manner, so you, you make a motion to recommend.
Mend him for the.
An appointment to the board.
Appointment to the Board of, zoning board.
Zoning board.
Zoning board.
Sorry, sorry.
Mr. Les Stevens.
Motion's been made.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so yours was in the positive?
Yes.
So we're gonna recommend they appoint both people?
Well, they're gonna make the decision anyways.
Yeah.
You're saying that they can't, by the law, by the rules, it doesn't, it looks like they aren't allowed to appoint them. Am I correct?
Well, that's a recommendation from town council, right? And, and the input that I received from, all I was doing was receiving her, just relaying the information. Now he, the applicant also got conflicting information from.
Correct.
From them, so. But as a town, we rely on a town council, just as we do when we're going through our little stuff.